To order for the day, first item is approval of today's agenda.
I'll second with the discussion on the price quote change on fleet vehicles. I don't know if it's going to make a difference or not, but I see in one spot it says 22,347. And when I look at the minutes from the week when I wasn't here, it says 22,327. I don't know if it's going to make a difference or not, but...
You want to remove that one then from consent agenda?
No.
Sure.
Yeah, just to make sure that we get it even with the minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with removing the price quote change on the fleet vehicles. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Citizens, to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. Seeing none, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Approval of minutes from the May 7, 2019 meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that with the, on page seven, I could say we've got to match those things up. Whatever, I don't know which one's right. In the minutes, from the minutes, it says 22,327. And then in the price quote thing, it says 22,347. I don't know, did it change or whatever?
I think Georgia's going to...
I mean, it's only $10. It's, I don't know if that's going to make a difference or not, but I just...
I think just having it aligned is fine.
Yeah, just get it aligned, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see, we've got recognition of a $50 donation toward the Sheriff's work detail from Scandia Lutheran Church. We want to thank them for that, it was much appreciated. And, let's see, first thing is update on extensions, education related to backyard chickens. Come on up.
Morning Noel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody doing this morning?
Good.
Great. Well, my name's Noel Hardin, and I work with University of Minnesota Extension. I had a long trek across the parking lot to get here this morning. And I just wanted to come, I also am a member of Cass Clay Food Partners, I co-chair our steering committee, and part of that work is the Cass Clay Food Commission, which Commissioner Mojo is the representative of this jurisdiction on the food commission. So I just would like to provide a brief update this morning on one of the most popular topics that comes up in our food commission and related to food policy here in Clay County is backyard chickens. So we get a lot of questions about this in extension, and there's a lot of interest in the food commission and examining our policies. So I just wanted to give a little update about that.
Quickly, I think Noel, we might want to just mention too, that so the Cass Clay Food Commission, what we're doing is just basically looking at blueprints to get people the information about what is allowed, what isn't allowed, clear up any confusion so that each jurisdiction has this blueprint to go forward. And so, basically, the reason I kind of requested Noel to do this is because there's been some conversation from different entities about what may or may not be allowed, and I just wanted Noel to present you the information that we have.
Thank you, yes, that's really helpful context. So we're not trying to necessarily change policy, but we just want to help people navigate the rules that are currently out there. So I've shared two documents with you. The first one, this nice colorful one, is one of our policy blueprints that we've developed and approved through the food commission. So it goes through the topic of backyard chickens, lays out what the policies are in the six jurisdictions that we serve through the commission, and then looks at just some of the issues on both sides of the chicken issue. And so I wanted to mention and share that with you, and also let you know that we have similar blueprints on a number of topics, which you can find if you look on the Cass Clay Food Commission website. But just to give a few examples, we've looked at composting, beekeeping, community gardens, cottage food laws, farmers markets, nutrition programs, food waste, gleaning, hunger, healthy corner stores, and a few other topics as well. The most recent one we covered at our last meeting was looking at single-use disposable items like straws, plastic cups, things like that. So we're here and we are happy to help. Another item, so even though we have the blueprints, people still get confused, and they want to know if I live in this part of the county, which rules and regulations apply to me. So I worked with Emma, who's here in the planning department, to develop the other handout that you have, which is kind of a decision tree to help people understand, if I live in this part of the county, this is what I need to know about chickens. So that's really all I wanted to share. We did have a workshop in Morehead a little over a week ago, had about 15 people there. And so there's interest in chickens, most people were from Morehead, and so we made it clear that Morehead does not currently allow chickens, and talked about that a little bit. But I would be happy to answer any questions or listen to any feedback if you have any...
Any questions for Noel?
I just, I appreciate the work that Extension does and the partnership, and I think the biggest piece is the education and clarifying any questions that people might have. And so, to have a document like this, which I don't know, Emma, if this is something we'd want to put on the planning and zoning page, or as we go through the blueprints, if those blueprints would be helpful, I think that the more information we can get to the public, just to know what's allowed or not allowed, or navigating that is the better avenue, so thank you.
So we have two chicken experts in the county, Noel and Emma, so if anybody has questions, they can contact you guys, right?
Yes, we are happy to field questions like that in Extension.
Okay.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Appreciate it. Good work. Okay, we have a public, let's see, oh, we've got to wait a little bit for the public hearing, so, let's see, we'll go to item number four, request to reappoint two Board of Adjustment members, Paul Krabnik and Perry Bousha, for three-year terms. Emma, good morning.
Yes, we recently realized that two of our Board of Adjustment members' terms had expired, and that they need to be reappointed. Perry's term expired in September of 2018, and Paul's expired in February of 2019. They've both been continuing to attend meetings, and we've confirmed that they are willing to continue to serve their next term. So we would just request that we reappoint both of those members.
Emma, is there something that needs to be advertised for openings or reappointments?
I do not believe so, because they have not completed their three consecutive three-year terms. They're allowed three consecutive three-year terms to serve.
I'd move approval of the reappointments.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reappointments.
Excuse me, has Perry been on there? I mean, you say Perry's been on there? Because I'm not acquainted with him yet.
Yep, he has served, this will be his third term, so in September of 2021, he would be done. So he's been serving since 2012.
Okay, anything else? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay.
George, sir.
Yeah, let's take that price quote change. Georgia, Sarah, come on up, Georgia.
Good morning. We ended up having to change the quote for the purchase of the van, but the final quote for the van that we're purchasing is 23, or excuse me, 22,347. There was a $20 difference, I'm not sure what it notes in the minutes, but there's a tax on the cities that was an extra $20, they call it the metro tax, that was on the van.
Well, Mr. Chair, what we did in the previous minutes was with 22,327, so we need to keep that in the minutes as what it was. In the minutes for this meeting, we can reflect the change by the 20, was it $20?
$20 for, it's a metro tax, they did not include when they sent us the original invoice, but they need to get the tax money on it.
So the minutes were right, it's just the changes after the fact that you got the...
Right, right when they sent us the quote.
I didn't know it was just a typo, or that we wanted corrected, or...
It's fine. Yep.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks, Georgia, for clarifying that.
Well, we need to approve the change, so I would move the approval of the price quote on the fleet vehicle, second.
A motion and a second to approve the change.
And then just one other addition, there will be, you know, the tax and license, but obviously that doesn't go to the dealer, that'll go to motor vehicle.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thanks, I appreciate it. Okay, let's see, we've got, Steve, you want to do the number five, the memorandum of understanding for the buffer order?
I think Gabe said it.
Oh, okay, well, let's see, we'll find something here.
Is it too early to take a recess?
James, why don't you come up, we'll get number nine down here, so. Request to sign contract with, on the health care services for West Central General Detention Center. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to request that you sign the official contract with MEND. In the last time I was here, gave me permission to enter negotiations with them, we got a final contract here, with going with the nurse tech option like we did, we got all the benefits of everything. In addition, they're able to withhold the necessary to hire another nurse. So, the numbers I presented to you last time included that other nurse, this time it doesn't include it in the final contract here, so it's about $84,000 less, this contract is, than what I presented to you guys the last time I was here.
That's good news.
It is, I kind of equate it probably to like an electrician, when they have apprentices, you know, they don't have to pull all the wire and whatnot, and the MEND tax can do all that, and...
Kevin.
James, one of the things we talked about by having both of those was the fact that there would be some savings in your staffing times and what they do. Is that going to be reflective in this at all?
It's, the staff saving times is going to be the same, because our main staff saving time came with having to deal with meds, having to give the meds, having to, you know, order them, get them here and all that other stuff. It's going to be, all the savings that I reflected for my staff saving time is still reflected in this.
Then that is good news.
Yeah, very good news.
Did we find out what MEND stands for yet?
It doesn't stand for anything.
Oh, okay.
That's why, that's why I was like, oh, that was so embarrassing, I was like, oh. And then, yeah, it doesn't stand for anything, that's just the way it is.
So why they capitalize it?
Yep.
Call it something.
It's capitalized and then a small n. I don't know why the n is small, but...
People on the mend.
Yeah, people on the mend.
I'll go with that.
Mr. Chair, I would move the signing of the MEND contract.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to sign the contract, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good work. Okay, I think we're close enough to the public hearing. We have a public hearing to adopt ordinance 2019-1, amending legal description in ordinance 2003 for Barnesville Joint Powers area.
Make the motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, Emma?
Good morning again. This morning I come with a, this morning I come with a recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone two parcels in Humboldt Township. They are right outside of the current Barnesville JPA boundary. So the applicant owns these two parcels, which is approximately four acres of land, it's the site of the former Galaxy Supper Club, and they would like to reuse the space for office space that is currently not in allowable use in our agricultural zoning district. So the applicant and Barnesville JPA approached us to rezone these two parcels to become part of the Barnesville Joint Powers Association, which would effectively relinquish the county's zoning on those two parcels. So the Barnesville JPA would take over all zoning regulation there. The applicants and a representative from the Barnesville JPA are here today as well, are, sorry, the Barnesville, City of Barnesville, if you have any questions for them. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, too.
Thank you, questions for Emma?
Just to comment that this has also obviously been through the Barnesville Area Joint Powers Board, and at the last meeting, this was unanimously recommended to this board to approve the request.
Okay, anybody that would like to be heard from Barnesville?
If we speak back here or...
Will you come up to the microphone, please, that would be great.
Aye. Yeah, just really briefly, we're, yes, Emma stated, we're just trying to get it so that we can pull permits and do things the right way, to add some office space, some shop space, and I, it's my understanding, I think that those parcels predated zoning, so it's kind of, it's maybe not in ag zoning right now. So, that's kind of what we're hoping to do, and happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Questions, Kevin?
Not a question, but a comment, I think that property, so that's part of the building that was the...
Galaxy.
Galaxy?
Yes.
It seems to me that in today's zoning, that would have been qualified as highway commercial, wouldn't it?
I would think so, yes, but it is currently zoned agricultural in general.
Yeah. And that goes back to what he just said, that probably goes back to, the Galaxy's been around for a long, long time, that building, and that was probably prior to when we redid some of that, but I certainly think in today's day, that would have qualified as a highway commercial as opposed to ag. But I, I think it's, makes sense what you're doing, and I'm going to support what you want to do.
Any other questions?
Emma, I forgot to ask this at the Planning Commission, the other business parcels that are just to the west of that, would this align with the same, how those are zoned?
I believe so, yes. They, in the Barnesville JPA zoning, they are zoned C2, and I believe that that is what these other parcels will be zoned as well.
I just wanted to make sure that we're aligning that corridor however we can.
And I believe Karen probably can speak better to that, but I believe all of that joint powers coming on the east side of the freeway all the way up to the gravel road where it goes now, would be zoned the same as this.
Can we have your name for the record?
Yep, my name's Ace Gregg, and it's actually representing Dossen HQ, so...
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to close the hearing?
Both.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-1.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. There you go, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good work.
Thank you, Emma.
I can do my report.
Okay, let's, here, let's do your report.
All right, thank you. Last week, I attended a brief security clear, background study clearance for being the Chair of Lakeland Mental Health, so I'm all fingerprinted and good. And I also attended the MetroCog meeting last, last week, we talked about some of the North Dakota Transit applications that have been in, we're in the process, as we have been for the last nine to 10 months, in updating some of our articles of association, just clarifying some of the wordage, and talked about the 2019-2022 tip amendment projects that we're working on. We had a presentation on the Morehead 12th Avenue to South corridor study, and it was a study that had some pretty involved citizen input, which is good to see, they had two meetings at Concordia, and at least 75 people that came to offer input on that, and I think they have some good recommendations for the city of Morehead in terms of what that corridor will look like going forward. They've worked with Concordia to maybe recommend some access, reducing some of the accesses onto 12th Avenue, and also talked about adding some bike and pedestrian lanes going forward, so I think a good recommendations overall. And then we're in the process of talking about our 2020 budget, considering project needs list and prioritization, and I believe our engineering department highway is quite involved in going forward with any projects that we want and studies and so. That concludes that report, and then yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health meeting in Fergus Falls, talked, talked a little bit about a pay grant that was received from the Barnesville School District, and because that's one of the newest contracts, it's fun to see the kids that prioritize that, so there's $1,000 that will go to the Barnesville Schools for therapeutic supplies for kids, so good use of funds. Talked a little bit about the Minnesota legislation, I know we're in the process of wrapping up, a lot will change in the next week, we'll see, but one thing that is still on is the provider tax, it was set to sunset. It is now slated to go down from 2% to 1.8, but any percentage is still really important for that. One interesting note is our crisis program, the phone number that we've talked about that people can reach out and call in crisis, was recently highlighted in Ag Week, talking about the mental health services and farmers, and how that can connect and help, so they're remaining active in the community there. And then also Senator Klobuchar, in her office, will be discussing the opioid crisis with members from Lakeland Mental Health this Thursday in Fergus Falls. Also talked about our 2020 budget process, because the need for translators at the Morehead site is so great, it's become kind of a major budget issue, because we need to, they're needing to contract out with some speakers of so many different languages, it's almost $100,000 over what was budgeted for that. And in talks with Lakeland and Rhonda Porter, it's looking as though the request for the Morehead, or Clay County, will be 3% instead of 2%. And part of my suggestion was that, would it be cheaper to hire a translator, even if it was someone that just spoke a couple of those languages versus trying to contract for each one of them? And so, they're in the process of coming together with a PDQ for what that would look like if they were to advertise for that employment. But, it's one of those things that I know that I've heard Brandon Lunick from the Morehead Schools talk about, is just, how do you provide the best service, specifically when there's a language barrier? And so I think that there's a good plan going forward to how to address that, but unfortunately, it is resulting in a budget issue.
In terms of the school districts with that issue, is, is that something that they could look to Lake's Country Service to also maybe help out with?
I think that's probably a good point. I did tell Lakeland that reaching out to the schools would be important, too, to see that if there was a translator, that you could either...
I agree with that, I would imagine that the larger demand for it is probably no doubt in Morehead.
Yeah, it's not even an issue in any of the other satellites.
Yeah, yeah, so from that standpoint, maybe, maybe Lake's Country may not be the, I'm just thinking if, they get together on a lot of school district issues, you know, so I can maybe raise that with them.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Donna Baker, the CEO, about that, and just recommend that maybe reaching out in that avenue would be helpful. Let's see, but besides touring Fargo on Saturday, that's all I have to report, so.
On foot, on foot, that's great. Okay, are we ready, Steve, for number five, request approved? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nurse? This morning, I have Gabe Foltz here from Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District. Before you, you have a memorandum of understanding that we would like you to consider this morning. We've been working together as a SWCD board, there are staff members and representatives from our commission, came forward with this, this is really an extension of the buffer ordinance that this board signed back in October of 2017. And what we're looking to do is basically clarify and make sure the expectations are clear moving forward with how will we enforce, enforce the buffer ordinances, so...
Yep, so I guess this MOU just kind of lays out the duties and responsibilities of both the SWCD and the county, just to have something in writing and something signed if there was ever a dispute about anything, or... Yeah, just kind of goes through the responsibilities, talks about the compensation to the SWCD for enforcement responsibilities, about tracking time and invoicing the county for those responsibilities, timing, liability, if there was ever a dispute, and then a termination of the agreement. And Steve worked with Tony, way ago, the county attorney, to come up with this, and yeah, I guess, if there's anything else...
Yeah, I think that this memorandum really came from, has encouraged through Bowser, they had some good examples of successful implementations of the buffer ordinances across the state, and maybe some not so successful, and so they encouraged that, encouraged this to move forward. Currently, Gabe works under a grant, right, through his position, but in the event that now the buffers enforcement pieces have come, and he's working with the citizens to address those costs, and maybe some additional costs, and we wanted to make sure the board was clear with that, so...
This item I brought to you about two weeks ago?
Yep.
Would that be covered under this type? That you would be, what, reimbursed or something like that, or...
That would be more of, that wouldn't really be under the enforcement, so what we would be invoicing the county for is just for enforcement responsibilities, that would be more of just technical assistance in trying to get that, are you talking about getting that one removed from the...
Yeah, I mean, are we enforcing the buffer up there in Yulin Township in the northeast corner there? Are we enforcing the buffer strip there?
As of right now, no, because I had talked with all those landowners, and they are going to come up with a letter to petition to the DNR to try to get that removed.
Okay.
So as of right now, we're not going to be enforcing that upon them, but...
Until we clarify what it is classified as.
Very good, okay, that's just, I didn't want that enforced until we get it settled.
Right, yep.
Which is another reason that we decided to work locally. I mean, really, it is, I mean, to be able to have flexibility with landowners.
Okay.
And just to be clear, in the event that the SWCD does incur additional costs, we receive repair and aid from the state, that, that's where that funding would come from to pay for those services, so...
I know that years ago, when we were going through to determine what, what the best control was for it, and we chose the local control, but I think the, you know, the biggest concern all along has been, what happens if you end up having to litigate? You know, because that can be costly. You know, because that can be costly, you know? So hopefully, through, you know, exactly what you talked about with the landowners up there, that we would be able to work through some of these things locally and avoid that.
Yep, and we are, we're going to do kind of every step we can to try to avoid the enforcement of it. We're going to, if they're not into compliance, we'll continue to contact them, see what we can do to try to get them into compliance without going the enforcement route.
And you've shared during the board meetings about the percentage of compliance already that you have, and it's fairly significant.
Yep, yep. So along the public waters, it's about 96% or 97% compliant. The public drainage ditches gets a little bit hard to determine right now because the Buffalo Red Watershed District is going through and handling all the buffers along their drainage ditches. So I think we're right about 70-some percent compliant along the public drains, so...
How about the wild rice?
In the wild rice, it's right around 75%.
Do they do their own along their ditches, do they, or...
They are not, no. So we have been contacting those landowners, and the county has also taken on the enforcement along those drainage ditches instead of the watershed, so...
Okay, anything else for the gentleman? For the board's wishes on the MOU?
Well, I believe this is something that we've worked with Legal on, so Legal has had a chance to offer input. So because of that, I will make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the memorandum of understanding. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All the same side, motion carries. Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, preliminary budget discussion.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair Commissioners. It is that time again to start the process of looking at the 2020 budget. What we have before you this morning, if you would choose to accept it as a target date for the budget cycle, this kind of goes in the process of how we've done it in the past. At the end of this month, Lori will be sending out budget packets to the department heads for their updates for the upcoming year with a June 21st deadline of returning it back to Lori's office. At that point, I will walk through each of those budgets with the department heads with the understanding by July 5th. Or starting in July, we would have them come present to the board. But the goal will be having a preliminary levy set before August, or excuse me, October 1st with a TNT hearing of December 3rd.
Questions for Steve or Lori on this?
Looking at this schedule, the... So when they, Lori, when they turn in their budget requests by June 21st, and then it goes to Steve by July 5th, do you incorporate, or do they incorporate the step increase costs?
Yes, they incorporate the steps. Darren actually sends me a worksheet with all of the employees and when their steps. So I send them that information, and they include the steps, and I do the code.
Yeah, the code is a separate line item that we do during our budget process. So maybe a question for Darren then, because I know that one of the things that we wanted to really be able to incorporate is this compensation study that's going on. And so if we're looking at that June 21st to July 5th timeframe, it would also be nice to have Darren, I don't know if you want to come up? Are we going to have access to that?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to bring that up to the PIG today when we meet, but I talked to our David Dron associates that are doing the wage study, and they are well on their way to being completed. They want to actually come up on June 11th to give a preliminary report. I just need to know whether we want to do that at the PIG level first and then bring it to the board, or do a board session, probably a closed session at that point because no decisions have been made.
What I see happening here, Lori, for this would be not necessarily to have any adjustments to those within the line items up front, but to have a separate implementation line item as a dollar amount for the purposes of budgeting.
Kind of like the insurance increase.
Yeah, but what I would like to, incorporating that is early in the process as we can, you know, so before we make any commitments to anything else, it's nice to know what our full, you know? So the earlier we can get what that assumed implementation cost would be.
The way I understood it, that on June 11th, they can make time to come up here and talk to the PIG or the board, like I said. And then they'll need some decisions on where you want to be compared to the market. And that will drive the cost of what the market study would cost.
Will they give us some ranges?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, we could probably, that's the Tuesdays, so we can maybe have PIG before the meeting and then have them give a presentation.
Same way we did before that.
I won't be here that week, so just make sure and plug in another commissioner during the PIG piece.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Darren. I think in terms of your, this is pretty routine here for the target dates.
Anything else? We do, normally do we, you guys are most, make a motion to approve that this timeline?
I'll make a motion to approve the timeline.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the budget timeline. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries.
At the board last week, also Commissioner Moore asked if we can look at a potential update from the 2018 budget and also the first quarter of 2019. So on your desk this morning, you had information held off the press from Lori. In identifying, there's two forms that should say 2018 on top. Moving forward, on the next few documents, the green highlighted areas are going to be associated with revenues, the yellow with expenses, and pink will be the final 2018 numbers on the form. So historically, the board is wanting to look at revenues and expenses that were over 110%, so I did highlight a couple of different areas in the general revenue portion. The treasurer's office had 300% additional revenues. And talking and going through with Lori, a lot of times that just has to do with the market adjustments.
And timing of the receipt of the interest and market value adjustments as well, so...
And so that was one of the areas in revenues. Elections, Lori received a grant for new election equipment, and so that was the reason for the 21,000 percent.
Yeah, I do what I can.
Percent increase. And also planning and zoning. That is where the repair and aid shows up that we discussed earlier. We don't budget for that because it is not necessarily guaranteed dollars that we receive each year. And so that, those are the reasons for each of those. When it comes to the expense piece, the elections, again, we're at 139%. As you guys are well aware, we only have elections every two years. And Lori budgets for the elections in the off year. And so the funding for the elections is actually, was actually already there to cover that.
Yeah, we had levied in '17 to help offset...
We just even it out, so it's not such a...
So does that have to adjust up slightly then?
Yeah, I increase it a little bit every year because the maintenance costs increase as well as the printing costs, so...
That's good.
The other area was planning and zoning in expenses. It's 147%. As you are well aware, in 2018, we added the technician position for a portion of the year. So that added to the increase, and we also had retirement of the department head that we had some payout that added to that percentage. So if we look overall, overall, the revenues, expenses, total revenues, budgeted versus what we received was an additional $1,061,003. Our expenses were, boy, just about spot on. Good work to our department heads of keeping to their budgets. And so that was at about 100%. Anybody have any questions on any of the general revenue section, please? The second page of that starts with the highway and bridge. I don't know that there's anything of significance, and Lori and I went through this page. There's not anything that, from what was budgeted, revenues or expenditures, that was out of the line unless there's something specific that you have there. We could answer any questions?
Why is emergency management so high at this percentage of the year? Is that 74%?
Are we talking 2019?
Yes.
2019 emergency management would have, there would be some flood costs.
I didn't know if that was on yet.
There's no questions on that part. We did also include the change in fund balance form for 2018. Again, of our 10 different funds, we had six of them that ended with revenues over expenditures. General, looking at the general fund, we had revenues over expenditures of about $243,906 for a net increase to $10,85,815. Our road and bridge did show expenses over to revenues, but a lot of times that just has to do with when the projects are getting completed and paid out. Social services is great to see. We had revenues over expenditures of $397,616, which has been a stark contrast that we've seen over the last couple of years as far as auto placements. And so I know that they had a period of time last year where their placements were down. Unfortunately, right now, they've kind of circled and they're going back up again. But that's where we're at. The building fund, I don't know if you want to touch on that?
Well, a lot of that levy goes into, goes into the jail funding. And so typically, we use a little bit of fund balance there. It just depends on the projects that Joe has going on within the courthouse. And so the majority of that did go to the jail, which was budgeted. And so the additional was just a little fund balance that he used from the previous year.
Public health was about spot on. They did have $12,483 of revenues over expenditures. Again, they're showing a deficit there, and that's based on that PERA accounting adjustment that we talked about in previous years. And so again, it's a paper, paper, not a money transaction.
And there's going to be, we haven't gotten that information yet. We're still waiting for the state to get that. So that, part of that adjustment is in there, but the majority of it is not yet.
Solid Waste had revenues over expenditures of $663,384 with a fund balance of $14,864,162. I do think that in addition to, the exception here is most of the other items are cash value. This one has both cash value and property valuations and things like that. So there isn't $14 million cash sitting in Kirk's account, so... Family Service Center, we did see a deficit there of $191,666. Is there anything particular with that one?
Off the top of my head, no, actually.
Okay. We did have some movement of offices last year. I don't know if the cost of...
Typically, it would be construction costs is normally what causes that.
Sure.
We did the elevator last year.
Two elevators.
Yeah, so that would be...
Didn't that come out of the building fund, or...
That came out of the family service center.
Oh, it did, okay.
Juvenile, the juvenile detention portion had revenues over expenditures of $559,976. That was brought about by additional non-member usage. And last year, their contract also for members, if you overutilize what you purchased, there was also a cost that was associated with that. Moving forward in 2019, it goes back to a flat fee, but that was associated there. They also had a number of people that left with lower salaries, and so that impacted their bottom line. I think one of the things that we've talked about when it's come to the construction of the juvenile centers is kind of an area that we thought if we needed to look at utilizing, that would be an opportunity. Internal Service had a deficit of $186,919. Again, one of the things that would be an explanation there is we were notified early last year that the law enforcement vehicles were going to see an increase. And so the sheriff and chief deputy came in requesting the ability to purchase, I think it was eight vehicles, last year rather than this year. And so we'll assume that will be replenished in 2019. And then debt services.
Debt services, all the debt service funds put together for highway, law enforcement, and the capital projects, all in one fund.
So overall, we have a fund balance with all the combined departments of $51,124,883.
Lori, the, excuse me, the change in the juvenile detention, is that both secure and non-secure?
That, yeah, that's combined there, yes.
Okay. Do we have a way to break that out?
It is separated in our books. It isn't, but I can certainly separate that out.
If you could just provide that to Commissioner Wayland and I to... Because I think as we, you know, when we talk about that facility over there, we've asked them to, for example, on all of the overruns that are going on, to distinguish between what's secure and non-secure.
Yeah, we separate that as well. That's also split.
So some of that, moving forward, we may ask our members to help with that, so... Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on the fund balance form? Otherwise, just to touch base, it's 2019 form, again, for the first quarter. Again, our revenues are generally lagging behind, so there's not a whole lot to look at there. Overall, when we went through each line item of the expenses, as a whole, we're at about 23%, going through 25% of the year. And nothing, I guess, stood out as far as where we're at. Information Services was at 35%, but sometimes it depends on where the licensing's that they have to purchase are at and the appropriations that go out at different percentages times a year. So unless there's any other questions there.
So this is through March?
This is through March.
Any other questions? Thank you. Dave, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought I would continue to bring Justin for a few more meetings for sure. Kind of get used to things in case we're ever going...
We don't want to scare a void.
We've got three items today on the agenda. First item being approval of the yearly supply bids. Those were turned in last Thursday at 10 o'clock and opened publicly. Nobody showed up here, so we took them back to the office. And three of the four are just essentially lists of equipment and materials that we can utilize throughout the year. I think in your packet there, I put together all the lists. We've got corrugated metal culverts, we've got vituminous asphalt, we've got rental of the construction equipment. Those three, I think in the past, we've done separate motions of approval to approve all bids. And then the fourth one being the gravel bids. We've got 30 townships in Clay County, and we have a quantity of material needed that comes from the mortar grader operators as they go out and take a look at their district. They provide a number, we put them on there for how much gravel it is. And we're right on track. We're roughly like somewhere between 40,000 and 50,000 yards per year. So this year, we got 45,135 yards that we bid out. We've had some years where one contractor gets almost all the gravel. This year, it's split about 50/50. gets almost all the gravel. This year, it's split about fifty-fifty. Uh, we did get three bids for gravel this year, and I guess we can go into that a little more later, but, uh, it's about fifty-fifty. So, it was, it worked out pretty good. I think our prices were good. Sounded like one of the contractors didn't get some gravel work in Cass County. Uh, so he bid our county a little harder, which I guess is good for our budget, so.
You need a motion to approve this gravel?
Yes. Well, if you want to look on page two of your packet there, I kind of just tried to break it down a little bit. Uh, I think in the past, is that correct? I think we did separate bids for the, for each one.
I'll make a motion to approve item number one, the bids for the metal culverts.
We have a motion and a second for, uh, the metal culvert bids.
Do we need to state what was?
Yeah, I, certainly can. Yeah, we only got one bid this year. It's True North Steel. They're located over in Fargo. Uh, they've been bid every year since I've started here. A few years back, we started getting bids from Contex, and we can still get prices from Contex. Their, uh, their offices are a little further away, so the, their typical business would be if we order up a couple of semi-loads and store them in our yard, which we're, luckily, we don't have to do that with, uh, True North next door. I know many even, uh, like Norman County, they've got a yard full of culverts that they have to kind of do that kind of work because they don't get them delivered, uh, within three days like we do. But, uh, we did only get one bid this year.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries.
I'll also make a number, uh, motion for night, number two, to accept the bids for the vituminous mix.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bids for vituminous mixture. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries.
Little approval of the bids for the rental of construction equipment.
Second.
Motion and a second for the bids for rental of construction equipment. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries.
And then for the gravel bids, like I said, we did get three, three good bids. Um, Ag Industries did not put a bid in. I think there was some issues with their mailbox location. And, you know, we, we advertised for three weeks in the paper, um, and they didn't reach out to us. We do mail these out to some of the people that have bid in the past. Um, but for one reason or another, we didn't get a bid from Ag Industries. Um, they do a lot of work in the construction industry, and I, I think the gravel bid work is kind of filler work for them, so it's not, um, it's not a huge part of their work. But, uh, typically, we always get bids from Turner Sand and Gravel, uh, Strata, which used to be Summit Companies. We always get bids from them as well as Fitzgerald Construction. Uh, Fitzgerald did not have any of the low bid townships. Uh, but as you can see in your packet there, Turner Sand and Gravel was low in townships four, seven, eight, twelve, thirteen, twenty through twenty-two, and twenty-five through twenty-nine. And Strata was low in townships one through three, five, six, nine through eleven, fourteen through nineteen, and twenty-three, twenty-four, and thirty. And just, I don't know if everyone knows how it works out, but we start in Georgetown Township. That's Township one, and we go across, uh, one through five, and we're s, we're six deep. So, it ends up being thirty townships. That's how they're laid out.
Would we, if you did the whole thing, I mean, some get some, I mean, Strata gets some, Turner gets some. If you add them all up, would, would we better go to one company or the other, or are we going?
I think competitively, it's good to get bids from both. They, they've, they've all got-
Oh, no, I'm not saying you shouldn't get bids from them, but, uh, the total for everything, if you add them all together, Turner's all together and Strata's all together, do we come out closer?
The, the problem is, is that the locations of the pits, some of the companies only have locations of pits in certain areas, and some have locations in certain areas. And so, when you calculate in the haul cost, it makes-
Absolutely. The production cost is cheap. It's the getting the material from the pit to the roadway. So, the geographically, that's why, that's why Strata has some, uh, advantages, and that's how they end up with the townships they got because they're close. And that's why Turner has some because he's got pits that are closer. So, that's, that's completely how, how they end up basically getting their competition's location. You know, you can, you can look on the column number two. We also take bids on, if we just go pick it up, you know, let's say we need five hundred yards of gravel. You can see Turner Sand and Gravel, their cost to produce gravel only and not haul it is either five fifty or six dollars per yard. And then Strata's is five sixty per yard. So, they're, production-wise, they're dead on. It's just location-wise.
Right. I guess I was just wondering, I mean, this is a per township bid.
Yep.
I was just wondering, what if we went by a per county bid?
It'd be so, when I first started this, Frank, every single mile in Clay County had a different price. Every mile of gravel that we did, we had to calculate haul costs. It took me a week or better to crank all that out. When I took over, I said, no, no, we're not doing this. We're getting thirty prices, and we're going to bid it to the center of the township. That way, if there's miles that are further, hopefully, they offset with miles that are closer to the center. Because I, you know, the townships only get one price. Well, I'm wondering, why are we getting, you know, two hundred different prices? It was just way too much work, way too much-
I can see that. I was just wondering whether you get one county price, but that's, that's fine. If it works for you, it's-
Yeah, I think that's kind of the best way to do it. It's along the lines of how the other, and, you know, how the townships get their cost. And I think the gravel people kind of struggle with that if we tried to get that because, you know, everything's based on that haul. It's just an industry thing.
Now, these are just for the county roads?
Correct. Well, yes and no. Remember how we do kind of ask some townships and cities if they want to partner with us? So, we do have a few partnered, but, but essentially, I think, yes, this is county roadways. Townships will get their own numbers. They typically do, but there's probably, I think, two. I think we get Park Township and, um, I think it's Holly Township. So, there's a couple of townships. We also do some graveling for, uh, the roadways in the city of Moorhead. They're in Oakport Township that they annexed. Uh, we're going to gravel some of those roads for the city of Moorhead. And I think City of Holly has a roadway by the grocery store that goes north. I think we do a little graveling for the city of Holly. So, there's a very small part of this that's not county roadways.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the counties that aren't with us with the-
Townships.
Or townships, excuse me. I mean, we've got those three townships that are on-
Yep. Yeah, this wouldn't include any of their work, I guess. I don't think they're part of it.
Okay.
They could be if they wanted to.
I had a question. Uh, you have the estimated quantity that you need.
Yep.
And there's a couple there that don't have a quantity listed. Do we still appoint the bid on that one in case something comes up?
Yeah, yep. Throughout the year, if we do say, hey, we got to gravel a roadway, that way, we've got a number. We don't have to come back to the board or do another bid or anything.
Any other questions?
All in all, the numbers were pretty good this year, so it was nice to see.
Any board wishes on the gravel bids?
I'll make a motion to approve gravel bids.
Second.
Motion and second to approve gravel bids. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries.
Just, if I can, just, uh, one, one thing. Going back to the rental of construction equipment, I know we have just, there's just a few on this list, but I would certainly, um, think we should be, um, friendly in being able to modify that list.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, there might, there may be times during the course of the year, depending on what be, might be going on, where-
Sure.
-you might need something and-
Yep.
And it, and if you can go out and find somebody else who, I just think we should be able to modify that list from time to time or add it.
Yep. And that's way, way back when I can, even when Michelle, um, Lawson was our civil attorney, she told me that it's essentially a toolbox. So, mid-July, if you need to get equipment lists from other contractors, that, uh, that's okay to do that. It's essentially a list to work from. It's not an actual competitive bid. That's why we're approving all bids, so.
The header is twenty seventeen equipment, right?
I didn't catch that one.
Yeah, I saw that. But, but the, the main thing, though, is that, you know, because we, we do, we do have a resolution to list those, that if you come up with another one, we need to modify that resolution.
Sure.
To make sure that they qualify. So, that's all I'm asking there. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, so the gravel roads are a little rough right now.
Oh, they are.
That rain really, they're really bad. Can you just give an update as to what, what we're doing to try to-
Yeah.
Let those frost boils-
I know, uh, Terry had five pages of comments and calls yesterday. It's, it's about as bad as I've seen in a long, long time. So, as the frost is coming out of the ground, it's already wet, and the roads are extremely soft. If there's any traffic on it, it just pumps up. The black organic clays come to the top, and, uh, we're out right now trying to smooth those things off. Uh, we've closed several roads to, you know, other than local traffic, going to try to keep some of the trucks and other people that don't need to be on there. Um, we've also put some five-ton-per-axle signs up, uh, as we've been getting calls from, um, you know, specifically around the city. If someone's shooting across and going around the scale or something, and there's some of those roads that are just in tough, tough shape. And, um, uh, it's just going to be bad. We're going to try to smooth it out, and hopefully, people can get through there. But it's, uh, it's, you know, if we get more rain this week, which sounds like we're going to.
Now, I drove one oh eight last night, and I just, that's a tough one.
We got-
I mean, they, I'm, I'm sure there's other tough ones.
Right.
But, uh-
We've got two motor graders working together in tandem on one way right now. I was told this morning. So, they're, you know, it's, it's hard because I know the, the growers got to get out there with their equipment. They got to get out there. And, and we're not faulting anybody. You know, it's, it's a combination of that and construction and just other things that are going on right now. And we're trying to, uh, you know, keep those roads in good shape for the locals as well as the farm traffic that we realize got to get their, their work done.
Yeah, as long as they make a rut in the road, then you got water standing in there.
And the hard part is, then, same thing when you bring the motor grader out there. The last thing that's on the road is their two rear tandem axles, you know?
Right, it just pushes back through.
Yep. I mean, if you could drive backwards and have the scraper up front or something. But, uh, so a lot of times, people want us to get out, but it's like, gosh, you get out there with that heavy motor grader, and then you leave ruts right behind you.
There's just a lot of clay on the ground right now.
Oh, it's just-
It's just pushing, there's so much clay that pushed up.
All right. Item number, uh, item B is approval of extended warranty. Uh, and it might have been a type one there. I think I initially thought it was unit one twenty-seven, but it's actually one fifty-one. Uh, it's a plow truck that we, uh, started, we put in service early this spring. Um, when we buy all our motor graders, and we've always done this since I started, is we always buy extended warranties for those. And it seems to be kind of an industry thing. Um, but there, it's a high-dollar piece of equipment. There's a lot of, a lot of breakdowns. Uh, the cost for a seven-year warranty on a motor grader is about twenty thousand dollars. Um, and with all the recent emissions and electronics in our new plow trucks, uh, up until recently, we've never even really been, um, asked or, uh, ex, you know, shown that extended warranty is something that we should consider. Until recently, we had a, uh, truck over at the dealership, and they said, well, you guys should really be buying the seven-year bumper-to-bumper warranty because if you have one small item that goes out, it's going to be ten grand or more. Um, so a seven-year, one hundred and fifty thousand mile warranty, uh, cost is about, I think it's fifty-one hundred dollars or so. I would recommend, I mean, that'd be a huge impact to our budget in double or triple the cost of that warranty over the course of seven years. I, to me, it makes a lot of sense. Uh, it covers a lot of, a lot of high-dollar items. Um, you know, re, and most recently, we did have a turbo unit going out on a, about a three or four-year-old truck. You know, it's thirty-eight hundred dollars alone just for that turbo unit that would have been covered. So, um, there was a few things, uh, and we did talk about this at Highway Committee. Uh, one of the things that I did find out is the war, the seven-year warranty starts from the date of service.
Oh, it does.
It does. It doesn't start, you know, a typical warranty on a truck like this is-
She really only gets a six-year then.
Yeah, essentially, you get one year with the truck. If you buy the extended seven year, it starts from day one. So, um, I was a little disheartened to hear that, but, um, so that's kind of how that works. Um, yeah, it's just, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of extent, expensive parts in these darn things. And to me, it makes a lot of sense.
So, you're buying a six-year extended warranty is what you're really buying?
Yep, exactly. One plus six.
Mr. President, Dave, Mr. President, Chair, Dave, we talked about in the, in the meeting that it has, you have the ability to purchase after the fact, uh, up to, up to one year.
Yep.
So, if we purchased, if we had the war, original warranty of a year on the vehicle, and then we purchased the warranty at the end of the first year, would we then get seven years, or is it still?
I think-
Date of end service?
Yeah, I think it goes back to the date of end service on those two. The others, no way to kind of get around that. And then it costs, what is it, an extra four hundred bucks, I think, if you buy it after the first year that you can, you can buy it up to, up to eighteen months afterwards, you can buy it. And it costs a little more the longer you wait to purchase it. And I, I think, to me, it's, it's sure how my budget to not have to pay for some of the stuff later in life.
Board wishes.
Well, I was, like I said, as we discussed this at the Highway Track Meeting, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, to approve the extended warranty in unit one fifty-one, yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay, all in, any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries.
Item C is a-
Another point.
Yeah, pretty much. Uh, I ta, I did talk to AMC a little bit, and they do want to try to utilize, you know, they use this data throughout the year. And I realize the session is over, and it may or may not have special session, but, um, they would like to have our support on a, on a funding resolution, basically funding transportation. Uh, I guess I, I think it's, you know, hit the, the plan moving forward, uh, looked like a good plan. There's obviously a shortfall, uh, for roads and bridges to the tune of about one billion per year. And, uh, there was some different things that they put together that would, uh, backfill or fill the gap, I guess. But, um, we did talk more to Highway Committee. There was a little wordsmithing that, that was requested, and we, we made a few changes. And AMC had no problem with that at all. And like I said, she did suggest, she would like us to still pass the resolution.
If that's the situation, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and approved, uh, the request for the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. All in same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, uh, Dave, I don't know, do you have a Barnesville update on the speed study that we talked about?
Yeah. So, I've been, uh, I've been working with the city of Barnesville. When we had our small city, uh, county meeting, you know, they had some, uh, they had broadened up the fact that they've got some speed issues there on Trunk Highway thirty-four, just, uh, as you leave and go to the east of Barnesville. Uh, I talked to MINDOT, and they got back to me, and there was a request that was made. Um, a study was conducted, and apparently, they, they're waiting for the commissioner's orders to come back. So, they are, they're tweaking the speed limits a little bit. Uh, for the most part, I, I think it goes, uh, forty miles an hour, and then it steps up to fifty, and then to fifty-five, and then to sixty. So, there is, there is a little bit of a transition. I don't think it's quite what the city wanted. Uh, I did reach out to Mike and their public works director, Don, and let him know. I shared to him, uh, what information I had. And I, you know, I don't, I think, on their behalf, they should maybe reach back out and see if there's, you know, I really kind of agree with them. It'd be nice to see that forty at least carry out to where the-
Past the lake.
By the lake there. Because that's where kind of the, there's a, there's a more, a pretty recent path that was constructed there. And, uh, it's not right on the roadway, but it's fairly close. And, uh, to me, it would warrant at least some discussion on carrying that forty out.
My conversations, uh, with the city of Barnesville, um, my question was, would it be helpful as a county to help with that proposal? And I didn't know if it, to have the county and city working together to request-
Sure.
-at least extending that out. I, I certainly would be in favor of that. I think it makes sense. I know oftentimes, stuff in government doesn't make sense, but this one does.
We do have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with MINDOT in Detroit Lakes to talk about an issue on Highway ten in Glendon. You know, and I can, I can ask a little bit, questions or I, I think I agree, maybe a letter coming from our board or board chair stating our, you know, our feelings towards that as far as with regard to safety and the trail.
Was that something this board could support, requesting?
Who requested going on Glendon, going to Glendon? Who requested that to go to thirty to thirty-five?
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody requested it. I think they did a statewide study.
I, I think the, the speed tickets they gave out there indicated that people have a n, natural tendency to drive faster. And that's how they set speed limits.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So, uh, you know, it's, your average speed is-
Yep, they take the eighty-fifth percentile, and that's what they, if people feel like that's a comfortable speed to drive, that's kind of, you're right, absolutely right on.
Dave, is, uh, it's something that you can reach out to the city of Barnesville and see what their letter of request was and-
Sure.
-possibly give this to, you, the chair or this board to-
Okay.
-endorse the request as well.
You bet.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Steve, discussion on the county long-range planning.
Morning again, Mr. Track Commissioners. Uh, as you're aware, less, past April, we, uh, we had this, uh, management retreat, and a portion of that management retreat, uh, was looking at strategic planning for, I guess, uh, as a, as recently as immediate to up to the three-to-five-year range. Uh, and so, uh, what I've asked Darren to do is kind of put together a, a, a little bit of information. There's a PowerPoint today to, to kind of cover some of the issues that we've, that we've, that we addressed and, and the potential goals or strategic vision that we have, uh, for, for you. and the potential goals or strategic vision that we have, uh, for, for you to, to address, uh, either approval or, or provide some direction, so.
Well, uh, I was gonna put all this on the screen for the audience, but there isn't nobody here, so I think everybody has a copy of the, of the slides as well. Um, so to start off with the recap of where we were and where we are now, um, the managers had an off-site, uh, which was held on April twenty-third to discuss some of the long-range, short-range planning goals. Um, that was hosted and facilitated by Brian Erdman from AMC. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to be there. Um, I think I was dying that day, so I'm better now. Four goals were identified during, uh, the manager's off-site, and, uh, those are listed as the short and long-term space needs and capital planning for, uh, Clay County departments. Uh, we've been talking about that quite a bit. Uh, efficiency improvements, recruitment and retention, and then succession planning. Um, the purpose of the, the discussion today is, is to seek approval from the board to move ahead on either one or all of those, um, uh, goals. The second slide is our Clay County current goals, which were actually, uh, implemented and, and thought up in February of twenty fourteen, from what I can tell, and, uh, continued quality service delivery plan, planning and construction of the new law enforcement center and correctional facility, and I also added on there the regional, uh, juvenile center. Um, as you know, the law enforcement center has been completed. Correctional facility will be completed at the end of this year, and I think the juvenile center is scheduled for the beginning of next year, I believe, so.
Do you have a comment? I think as the second bullet point evolves and moves towards completion, one issue that we've talked about is the detox center needs, specifically because we applied for a large grant. Commissioner Gross and I have been part of that dialogue and, and, you know, I, I see on here that you have something, talking about community facilities later, you know, I, I certainly think that that should probably be included in a conversation we're addressing.
Yep, definitely. Um, and I, and I think the, the quality service delivery plan and the capital maintenance improvement plan is kinda incorporated into the new, new goals that we're setting for the next, you know, three to five or ten years or so. So the next slide is our short and long-term capital planning. Um, this is probably gonna be the biggest and most ambitious goal that we're gonna have, because it's going to involve a lot of, uh, thought process and, and, uh, looking to utilize the best space for what we have in the county. We continue to grow as a county, and, uh, so do our space needs. Um, the objective I put on there is to plan for future growth of the county departments, facilitate a productive and professional workspace for Clay County employees, and then under that, I put items to consider, and this was just kinda me, uh, not only thinking outside the box with Steve and some of the conversations that we've had with other meetings and managers' meetings and stuff, is, um, utilize more space in the family service center for Clay County services, um, questions on tenants, what, when they, if and when they leave, we use that space. Um, another option is rent space from different locations to absorb overflow, new construction to house Clay County departments, and then renovate existing buildings to better utilize space in courthouse and the family center, service center, and then reorganization and redistribution of space. And the biggest bullet there is other, because there could be a lot of other plans that we could come up with or ideas that we would pursue. Um, I guess the, the one thing that we're looking for is also, is there going to be, we should have commissioner involvement with one of these, if we're gonna set this up as a committee to discuss these type of long-range capital improvement plans and, uh, for the future growth of, of Clay County. Um, also looking at re, uh, examining our organizational structure and space needs, and then also, I know that, uh, two of the commissioners are on the campus improvement committee. Maybe that is the, the committee that we use instead of creating another committee for this specific goal. I guess we would look for some guidance on that, if, if that would be absorbed into that same committee. So we're looking for, um, ideas on that part. Um, the next slide is efficiency improvements, um, things to consider there. I think increasing use of online, uh, services and payments. Um, you know, everything's going online these days. You can do most everything from your phone. Um, improve customer service skills through training, just continuing the last county goal we had to improve customer service. That would continue on. Um, streamline collaboration between departments. I think one, the one step that we took in, for that was, uh, moving, uh, everybody to the second floor that's involved with land management. I think that's a, a good thing for not only internal coordination within the departments, but also for our citizens that, you know, if they come one place, we're not sending them all over the building or all over the campus to try to find the right answer or the right form that they need. Um, utilization of online meeting and collaboration, you know, Skype meetings and stuff like that, so we're not having to go to all these different counties or down to the cities to do, um, uh, collaboration and, um, then also consi, uh, continuous service improvement meetings. How can we continue to make our departments more efficient and better at providing the services that we, uh, are offering to the citizens of Clay County? And then also, um, I put on there determined ways to simplify interactions between Clay County and its citizens. You know, um, one of the things that popped in my mind when I was thinking about efficiency is, um, like dentist office or hospitals or the VA. I know I get a, a text message reminding me of my appointment and can I make it or not? And I have to reply yes or no. That's efficiency, because if you can't make it, cancel it so somebody else can make it, and, and you're also reminding somebody, hey, you have an appointment with us. That's just one example. There's probably a hundred other examples out there that we can improve efficiency, uh...
And a lot of that is just electronically generated too.
Right, right, exactly. It's not like somebody has to call you and say...
Right.
It's automatically put into a, a schedule and then sent out to the text, because, you know, so much is done on the phone through text messaging, uh, anymore. So, um, and then also kinda concentrating on looking at problems through the customer or citizen's eyes. You know, a lot of times we try to make it convenient for county employees and county departments, but we should be looking at things and issues through the customer's eyes and what's, what makes it easier for them as well. Um, next thing is recruitment, retention and staffing. I think some of the things to consider there are, um, what methods are we using now to recruit people? Um, what works and what doesn't? You know, uh, thirty years ago, everything was in the paper. Now everything's online. Um, you have so many different types of advertising through anything Facebook, Twitter, uh, Indeed, you know, all of those, and, but that also costs a lot of money sometimes, and so taking a look at where people are, are seeing our jobs, and I think when I, when I did the last survey, or looked at the data, a lot of people are just getting it from our website and friends and coworkers, you know, so, uh, I think those are, that's something that we need to, um, look into a little bit more. Um, I think the other thing that we're looking at is identifying why people work at Clay County. We have people that have worked here for twenty or thirty years, and why do they stay at Clay County? And then looking at, uh, what keeps them here. Um, s, uh, some of the things are, they say is, you know, look at the people that are staying here and like being here and then look for the same qualities in candidates and applicants that are coming in. Um, how do we recruit top talent through our selection process? Maybe that has to be streamlined or, or looked at more closely on how we pick the, the person that's going to, uh, take that job. Uh, wages, we're, we're conducting a market study right now, so hopefully our wages will, uh, come in line with the, the rest of the, uh, comparables. Um, benefits, we have an insurance committee that's constantly working on our, trying to produce the best benefits for the cheapest cost to our employees. Uh, working conditions and flexibility, you know, um, back in the nineteen fifties and sixties, everybody went to work and went to their cubicle and worked all day and went home. Uh, now in the two thousand and twenties, you know, people are working from home. They're working different hours, flexible hours, and so maybe that's some stuff that we have to take a look at as well. And then just the atmosphere of the work, um, you know, making sure that it's an enjoyable work environment to, uh, come to work every day. Um, staffing, do we have the proper staff to adequately accomplish the task and provide the services in an efficient, effective manner? Um, what is the right mix? I know we constantly try to, to juggle that between ser, providing services and providing an, an acceptable cost. Um, we have added over a hundred and forty-six employees since I started back in two thousand and eleven. We're up to five hundred and seventy-five employees right now. Uh, that includes variable hours and, and everybody, so that's, you know, as, as Clay County continues to grow, um, our staffing needs continue to grow as well. Um, and then, um, let's see. Yeah. So the next slide is, uh, who is Clay County? I just ran the stats, uh, this is probably a month old now, but it kinda shows you what, how many, um, different generations we have working in Clay County right now. We have five generations working in Clay County, and so the baby boomers or the silent generation probably have a, a different idea of what the workplace, workforce and the work is supposed to be than somebody that's coming straight out of college now.
It's nice to know I fit into the one percent.
No, yeah, the, the one percenters. You're probably the one percenters.
You better be careful, you're gonna be taxed more.
Yeah. So I think it's also important when we go through these goals to know the makeup of, uh, Clay County and who, who we, who our employees are and some of their things that they're looking for. If you look at, um, you know, our younger employees, they're looking for work-life balance, you know? Uh, some of our older employees are looking for benefits in retirement, so we have to take all of that into consideration as well, I think. Um, the last thing is succession planning. Um, I think, how do we identify Clay County future leaders? Um, right now, we have somewhat of a process, but it's, it's not a standardized process, I would say. This is probably one of the things that always sounds good, and this is, this is, uh, Darren Brooks' opinion. Um, this is one thing that always seems to sound good on how to do it, but the actual implementation of a succession plan is usually much harder, because how are you going to do that? Well, you're gonna have to have training programs to prepare the people to take, you know, the, the department head's jobs. You have to have mentorship programs to make sure that they're prepared for those jobs. Um, what's the identification and selection process? If you have five people that wanna be the, the department head, how do you determine what's the succession planning to do that? Uh, do you look at their qualifications? Do you look at their mentor, you know, how they've been mentored ship? I know when we were in the army, we had, we were called job books, and you would keep track of all the things that you have, were, had learned in the past, and then you kept that, and as you learned a new task, you would put in your job book. And so, uh, there's a lot that goes into succession planning. It's always a, a great idea. I think the other thing that we would have to look at is changing, um, you know, how we promote people, what we look for, that type of thing, and a process to do that. And that would include some changes probably into our personnel policy as well. Um, and then look at the changes in the dynamics and the technology. Uh, what was a supervisor twenty years ago is gonna be different than what a supervisor is, uh, twenty years from now, and it's gonna be technology-driven. Um, and we're gonna have to have supervisors that are very comfortable with, you know, all the, all the technology needs that are gonna be with these millennials and Gen Z's and everybody behind them that's coming up, uh, to be familiar with.
I think the challenge we run at, even when we looked around the room, uh, at, at our management retreat, in five to seven years, you know, department heads can come and go whenever, but from five to seven years from now, we're gonna have a different, different looking management retreat. We have people that are, uh, nearing that retirement case, uh, and I think it's gonna be important to make sure that we have some of those leaders, uh, who are ready, especially, uh, with the market being as challenging as it is.
And so the last slide is, uh, kind of the approval and comments. Um, we're requesting approval to move forward with all of the, some of the long-range goals identified. Uh, we don't have to do all of them, but, uh, these were the ones that were recommended for the, at the manager's off-site. Um, request approval to establish a working group for the long and short-range space and capital planning committee. Uh, like I said, that could be included in the, um, the campus, um, what's the name of that, campus improvement committee? And then, uh, a cri, request approval to establish working groups for efficiency improvement and succession planning. Um, right now, the Strive for Excellence Committee is already working on the retention piece, recruit and retain, and, um, we would probably take a look at that Strive Committee and s, and see if we need to add a few members to that. I think we had discussed, um, so that would be one committee that would be working on that. Um, if the campus improvement committee can start working on the space issues, and then we would just have to look at the succession planning and the, um, the, um, efficiency improvement, uh, goals on how we would do that. Some of these goals are kind of, uh, sometimes it's hard to put an end state on it, like, yes, we've, we've met the efficiency or we've met the succession planning, you know, um, but I think that's something that, that the committees or groups or whatever we form would have to determine. When would we know we met that goal? And like, cus, quality customer service, you know, we're continually trying to, to improve that, but will we ever get to one hundred percent goal? Um, you know, hopefully, but that would be hard to measure.
Darren, I think this is a pretty good, uh, synopsis of what was just discussed in, in terms of long-range planning. The part that is particularly difficult for me to, uh, wrap my head around is, is we talk about growth and we're growing and it's a county that's growing and we have programs that are growing and needs that grow, but nowhere in here do we talk about the fact that my taxes continue to go up, and I get that, that's all of us, we're dealing with that, and this board specifically decides that, but there has to be a point, and you talk a little bit about the efficiencies, but, you know, there has to be a planning piece for what happens if we have a two thousand eight again, or, um, and, and that is part of succession planning, is knowing that it's not sustainable continually to have budgets increased at a rate at which they do, and, and I know that the needs are going up, because I hear it all the time.
Right.
But that's the piece in here that I, I think we really should be more conscious of.
Yeah, and I, and I actually...
And it's not in here.
I actually had a, a note. I didn't, I didn't touch on it, because a note on the recruitment, retention, staffing, I circle it that it's cyclic. Um, it, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, uh, we had hundreds of people applying for jobs. We had no problem in firing them at step one, because unemployment was way high. People were looking for jobs, and so, yes, that's definitely a good point, is it's a cyclic. And right now, we can't barely buy a person, because there's so many jobs out there and people are moving around and they're, they're demanding higher wages. So we do this big wage study, and it's, it kinda goes back to, the last time we did the wage study, we were in the recession.
Right.
Now we're doing the, the market study and we're in, uh, you know, the best, one of the better economies that we've ever seen. So the, the, the wages are gonna come in higher, probably, than they were back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, because of the, of the cyclic nature, nature of the economy.
And we talked about the, the, you know, and here you have who is Clay County, and I think what you mean by that is who are the employees in Clay County, right?
Right, yes.
And so at the succession planning day, we talked about the community as a whole and trends and aging and stuff like that, and I think that piece really helps people understand that, uh, there's a large portion that are moving into a fixed income bracket in Clay County, and that's not reflected in this either, and I think that, um, for somebody who's just listening right now and we're talking about, you know, the growth and expanding and different departments and different spaces, you know, we need to have, there is a, a brake pedal here somewhere. Do you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, it, it has to be reflected.
Yeah, if I can, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I, I, I think the, you know, I, I, that's why this whole process is sto, it, you know, you could call it a strategic plan, and the strategic plan has to deal with what you anticipate, but then how do you deal with those anticipated needs with the balance of how do you pay for them?
Right.
And, and I, I think that's what Commissioner Mojo was saying, and it, so, you know, an example here, uh, can, this is the one thing that I, I kinda wanna nip this in the bud right now, from my standpoint only, but on the second page here, we're into the subjective to plan, and, and the third bullet, it has new construction to house Clay County departments, i.e. human services building. Uh, we've got a five-story building over there. I don't think we need a new building for human services. I think, you know, and I get what you're, what you're trying to say there, but I, I know Commissioner Wayland and I have talked about this, we've talked about with Steve. There's no doubt... There's no doubt that in my time here and Grant's time here, we've seen the demands on this building too. And we see this, you know, I think logistically and long-term, we would be foolish not to realize that this building will someday be nothing but a courts building. And that's, that should be our priority focus on this building, and so then that means where does administration go?
Right.
And administration then would need to have something else. And we've got some potential spots. This is, I'm not saying we're gonna do this tomorrow so that we get, so that our public doesn't get up in arms, but, you know, so those are, I think, those bullet points where you have bullet point three and four here, where you talk about renovating existing buildings at the courthouse, so that's the area that should focus there. And again, how do you coincide that with, you know, what our current demands are and what portion of our budget now goes to paying principal and interest for bricks and mortar? All those have to come into play.
And I just wanna make clear that when I was putting this together, these are just ideas.
Yeah, right.
These are things that have been thrown out in the past. Nothing has been debated, discussed, or anything like that, so I just put them on there.
But you, you know, the areas, but below that, where you say the areas to consider are social services, detox, courts, IT, and public health, all those are the ones that seem to be having the demands on the services for the county.
Right.
And that was clear by our management people, that, you know, so that, I think, is a priority. You know, I think, you know, we talked about, you know, in our building on X-Store here, right now, we have some, you know, maybe we're gonna have to look at some of what we're renting there, and if, why are we renting it if we need it?
Yeah.
You know, so that becomes a critical piece, and it's much easier to adjust the loss of rent than it is to pay for a new building.
Right.
You know, so, you know, and quite frankly, we have a lot of, we have an awful lot of other commercial people out here who provide rental space for non-government entities that are paying real estate tax, and we can, you know, we can, you know, work with them to, for some of these other agencies. But anyway, that's-
I think excellent point, and I think what Darren was talking about is our goal is hopefully establishing these committees, and so you guys would provide guidance and insight as a board to, as board members to kind of direct us in which way you'd like us to go.
Can I just follow up one thing?
So, you know, and I think the committee that, I think you're on it, Mr. Gross, I think that committee is probably a good start, but I think you, along with that, you have to have, when it comes to the capital improvement piece and those types of things, you have to have a financing package that goes with the capital planning process. Now whether or not you have a different group that can independently review that, I think that might be good, you know? So in other words, capital group could say, these are what we need, and then, okay, well, how are you gonna pay for them? I don't know if you can make that the same group, I don't know. And the operations and the additional costs of the labor, we do that annually through our budget process. That's, you know, that's to me, but we need to have the, you know, the advice from our people on what that is. I said it.
Well, and, you know, I mean, we built a new correctional facility, we're doubling the size of our detention facility, we had to build a new law enforcement center. I mean, it just stands to reason that we're not that far off from this building just becoming a justice center that deals with, you know, those issues. And so, you know, I think we're gonna have to look at, you know, some sort of an administrative facility and then better utilize the family service center. And, you know, and what worked with the law enforcement center and the correctional facility is, because when I first came on the county board, there already was a plan and a drawing for a new jail, but nobody had figured out how to pay for it. And so I think, you know, if we're gonna look at things for the future, that's the first, how are we gonna pay for it, you know? Then, you know, move on from there. And that worked, we got, we finally got these projects done because the first thing we did was decide, okay, let's decide how we're gonna finance them, and then move on to, you know, actual design and construction and all those things, so.
Frank, what?
Now, when we're talking about space requirements, you know, as I'm on the committee, and it just made me think, you know, we're doing a wage study, you know, to see where our wages are. Probably need a space study, you know, to see, I mean, is our committee that meets once every four or five months, something like that, is that sufficient to decide what kind of space we need? Do we need a wage, I mean, a space study, you know, to see, is it better to not kick some of these people out of there that are not county-related, you know, but should we do that, or should we build new and keep on getting, keep rent from that place? But, you know, I guess what you said, you know, what's more important here, getting rent from them or having space for us, you know, so.
I think that's where the finance piece comes in.
Yeah, and I think that goes hand in hand with determining, you know, how we're gonna pay for it, because, you know, you can come up with a rough estimate for, you know, what, how much square feet you would need, so, you know, then you can come up with a rough estimate of what it would cost to build that, and then you can start figuring out, okay, if we need, you know, twelve million dollars for an, you know, an administrative building to handle these particular services, then this is how we're gonna pay for it, and this is how long it's gonna take us to pay for it, and, you know, and with the least amount of impact taxes that are already going up, so.
As we were going through this, you know, I was writing down, which are the two most important things, and then space is one of them, and serving our customers, I thought was another one. I mean, this week I was, I was sitting, waiting to get my number called out of the License Bureau, you know, I mean, and I thought, geez, should we do it by appointments? You know, you call in for an appointment, you know, say, like you do a doctor's office or something like that, you know, and then take in, if any extras come in there, you take them, you know, but then I had to wait, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty minutes, and I thought, well, let's see. I just had a doctor's appointment, and I waited an hour and fifteen minutes before I got on, you know, and I just, so does appointments work? You know, gives you a tentative time, but, so it doesn't always work that way either, you know, yeah, but to serve as our customers, you know, I think that's, that's an important thing, you know, but I don't know which way to do it. I think they went to, for all the people ahead out there, I think they did a great job, you know, it's just, you know, so you waited a half hour, if we go to the doctor's office, you wait longer, you know, and it just, do we, yeah, we complain about that too, but it just, whatever. But I think those are the two big things, space requirements and customer service.
Everything clear? Is Monday then?
Yeah, we will establish, I think, some information for you, we'll bring it forward, we'll have some committees that will either continue with and expand. I guess the question I'd have for the capital planning piece, you know, we've talked about some different ideas of utilizing the campus improvement and the financial aspect of that. I guess just being clear with that, as a group, as a department, we'll put together some information for the capital group, campus group, is that what you'd like to see us do?
Well, you know, I think that the group that Commissioner Haney and Commissioner Gross are part of, one should be meeting more often. I think he's on, spot on when he talks about planning for space.
Sure.
Because that can be conservative or growth, I mean, really. And so I think that should for sure move forward, and I think what you have here is, they're good bullet points, you know, we're not endorsing anything right away to, for sure we're doing anything, but I think it states that the discussion needs to continue in order to address the needs.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Oh, hey, Kevin, your committee report.
Yep, on the fourteenth, I had a highway tracking meeting, and we talked, got a flood update, we were showing a map of the areas of the county that had some damage, it's being submitted for FEMA. We talked about the warranty for the tandem trucks, Dave's goal is to get that seven-tier near-year warranty, and all of the tandem trucks eventually likely do on the motor graders. We talked about this transportation resolution, and then Dave is still working on that highway road tour coming up, and then we got some construction updates on Glendon, and I think, you know, the fifteenth Avenue North is about to start. Then on the, let's see here, on Friday, we held another meeting on the draft of the Minnesota lands acquisition joint powers agreement, and that's, I think we are going to have a presentation here early June, I think our first meeting in June, from John Shockley, on this draft of the land act joint powers board, and also then he'll be presenting it to the city of Moorhead with the hopes of each entity voting on it by the end of June, with the idea in mind where this group will be in place to acquire lands in July. So that's that, so we'll look forward to more on that to come. Yesterday, we had our diversion authority chairs coordination committee meeting, and we went over, as I think I reported before, the Buffalo Red asked for an extension of time, and so we talked about that yesterday. We talked about the financial plan, permit conditions and mitigation requirements, and they continue to get requests from people wanting to know about their land and what the process will be, which is a good thing, so they're, I think it's about time where they get into individual meetings, one-on-one meetings, so they know what, instead of hearing from others, they can hear directly how they're impacted and how they can, will be treated, I guess, in the process. The, there is going to be kind of, you know, I think our administrative group suggested that we do grant that time extension, so I think there will be something that will come out this week on it in the board packet for the Buffalo Red Board. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Frank?
Okay. Tuesday, I was at the highway tracking, and I guess Commissioner Kevin pretty well covered that, you know, and we covered all the items at the meeting today. Tuesday night, I went to Spring Prairie Township, and there again, concerns about the road. I think we even had to close the road because it was being used too much, so much from truck hauling, and even had to close it for a while because there was so much traffic on the road. Then I went to Yulin City, their meeting, things went, I mean, they're doing good, they got a prison in there now, they're gonna expand, new developments going in up there. So it's sort of nice to hear, just like at the, when we had the small cities meeting, we found out all kinds of cities were adding more development areas, you know, now here Yulin's got addition to that they're bringing on, so there's good news up there. Friday, I went to the Moritz City Hall, we had a meeting with, it sort of went around the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Association, I think they were asking for some more funds, and I think Moore was just trying to decide, you know, how much funds should we give, or what's our return and stuff like that, so. It was a good discussion, they had a lot of the leaders of the Moritz City, the Moritz City, I mean, the colleges there, the schools, so it was a very good discussion on where they should go on with, as far as their involvement with the economic development. Last night, I went to Keene Township, there again, a discussion there with roads and stuff like that, they, there they contract out, and they're very satisfied with the way that it's going there, you know, so it's sort of surprising to hear, you know, they said, well, our people have gone over our roads five times already, and Clay County's only been out here once or twice, so, I mean, I don't know if it's five times or not, but they're satisfied with their, we're contracting out, you know, so, should we look at contracting everything out or not? The private contractors do a better job than we do. I think overall, I think we're doing a great job with the roads, you know, looking at what we did, but it's just, it was another perspective from a township that's contracting out, you know? I go to some other townships, and there's complaints about roads. Keene was happy with the roads, so that's my report.
Okay, let's see, I had, I was on the phone for the JPA meeting, Kevin reported on that, I had the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Executive Committee meeting, and had a lot of discussion on a new logo that's coming out for the EDC to give it a little more recognition, and more discussion on the fueling the future issue that we're working on with the Chamber of Commerce, and that was it for me for last week. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair, again, on Tuesday, I participated in the highway tracking, that's been well covered. That afternoon, met with the, in the planning zoning assessor's office to look at some efficiency, office efficiency spacing issues. On Wednesday, on August first, hands-free cell phone law goes into effect in Minnesota, and so on Wednesday, Georgia, Mark Sloan, Tim Darren and I looked at our existing policies and procedures, and kind of looked what we'll need to do to make sure that we're in compliance and also notifying our employees, and so we may be coming forward here with adjusted policy for the board here in the coming weeks. That day, also met with Rhonda Porter and Amy Ametson on a series of social service issues. Thursday, participated in the county administrator group in Little Falls. We discussed upcoming district meetings. This year, they're going to be having the legislatures, legislators come in in the afternoon rather than spread them out throughout the day in hopes of having a better dialogue or consistent dialogue. Julie Ring was also there from AMC. She discussed, currently AMC is partnering with Dave and Drownsen Associates to provide an HR, human resource area that you go to to address some different issues in hopes of not maybe needing to utilize your attorneys as much. That program was established on a three-year grant through Sourcewell, and that grant will be ending in two thousand and twenty, and so Julie is looking at for additional grants, but also talking about in the event they can't find grants, is this something that counties would feel that would be worth addressing, so a lot more information in the future on that. I think they're also gonna, Julie's also gonna be at District Four meeting in June to talk about that. Yesterday, participated in the new hire orientation and also the diversion chair meeting, that's been covered. Just a couple other updates on the noxious weed issue with Cass County, we're having a meeting on Friday with the county administrator and their weed inspector to try to get some finalization, both Kevin Kastenberg and Gabe are going to also attend that meeting. Mr. Campbell mentioned the road tour for Highway. The, I think Colleen sent out an email last week to check the near availability, I think June twentieth was the date, so if that would be something you could get back to us on, that would be great. And also, this last week, Nancy Gunderson came forward with June eighteenth as the date for, to set for the Board of Equalization, and so on June eighteenth, we'll need to move our board meeting to five-thirty with the Board of Equalization at six-thirty. But that concludes my report.
That's the same day as the picnic, correct?
That is the same day as the picnic.
I didn't, Steve?
That's it.
I just have one other item to note, that we are looking for a member of the planning commission, so if you know anyone, reach out to them.
Okay. Anything from the county attorney's office?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? There are none, we're adjourned.
We're adjourned.